Fantastic. Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Desert Hot Springs, Tuesday, May 10, 2022, 6:00 p.m. I will now call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Grant. Commissioner Mayor Hoffman. Commissioner Wagstaff.
Present.
Vice Chair Nindell.
Present.
Chairman Duffel.
Present. At this time, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Legions. Thank you very much. Can we have an approval of the agenda, please? Anyone with a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Chair Nindell.
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Wagstaff.
Commissioner Grant. Commissioner Meyer Hoffman, absent. Vice Chair Nindell.
Yes.
Chairman Duffel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will, I trust that everyone's had an opportunity to look over the Planning Commission's regular meeting minutes for April 12, 2022. I will now entertain a motion to accept them as presented or as corrected.
I'll make a motion to accept them.
Motion from Vice Chair Nindell.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Wagstaff. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Grant.
Absent.
Commissioner Mayor Hoffman appears absent. Vice Chair Nindell.
Yes.
Chair Duffel.
Yes.
And Wagstaff. Motion passes.
Okay, at this time, we will open the public comments, and at this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the Planning Commission should not take action or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. Comments are limited to the first 10 speakers at three minutes per speaker. Speakers may not yield their time to others without consent of the chair. All comments are to be directed to the Planning Commission and shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during public comments. Please complete and submit a speaker card. There are speaker cards in the back of the room there if you would like to speak in the public comments, and hand that into the city clerk. You will be asked to state your name and city of residence for the record. Do we have any public comments this evening?
It doesn't appear we do at this time.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comments and move on to the first public hearing. Item number two on the agenda, Trident Real Estate Advisory Cannabis Cultivation Project, May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow Planning Commissioners. This item is time extension 22-1 and have a short PowerPoint presentation. On May 16, 2017, the City Council approved conditional use permit number 16-16, and then on April 9, 2019, the Planning Commission approved an amendment to this conditional use permit. Last year, on April 13, 2021, the Planning Commission then approved a one-year time extension. The applicant, Trident Real Estate Advisory, is requesting a one-year extension of time to extend the entitlements to help manage their potential risks and to make sure their project does not lose any entitlements. Now, you can see the location there, parcel number 663-280003. Conditional use permit number 1616 is for the development of one-two-story cultivation facility totaling approximately 146,811 square feet on a vacant two-and-a-half-acre parcel located east of Little Morongo Road and north of Two Bunch Palms Trail. And in the map, you could see that it's just to the east of Allen Fens Company there. For the environmental analysis, as stated, on May 16, 2017, the City Council approved conditional use permit number 16-16, and in doing so, adopted the mitigated negative declaration for this project. Pursuant to Section 15162A of the CECL regulations, once an M&amp;D has been adopted for a project, no subsequent environmental review needs to be completed unless there are substantial changes in the project that warrant additional review. The Planning Commission only needs to make a finding that the request for the one-year extension of time is consistent with the original M&amp;D, and no further analysis is required, and there are no changes proposed as a part of this proposed extension of time. And it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission approve a one-year time extension subject to conditions of approval for conditional use permit number 16-16 from April 9, 2022 to April 9, 2023. And that completes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions, and the applicant, I do not believe, is in attendance.
Thank you very much, Dan. At this time, we'll entertain questions of staff from the Planning Commission. Dan, are there any significant changes to this project, or is it just an extension of time?
Just an extension of time.
Fantastic. And how many extensions has this project already received?
Just one last year, last April, so this would be their second out of possible three they would be eligible for. Hopefully, it doesn't get that far.
Okay, fantastic. And do we know if they were notified on the first extension about the limit of three if we do get that far?
Absolutely, yeah. Last year, they were in the City Hall quite a bit. They actually came to the last one last year.
Very good, thank you, Dan. Do we have any other questions of staff from the Planning Commission? Commissioner Grant?
You actually asked the question. I wanted to know how many, if they had another extension, so it's been answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grant. Commissioner Wagstaff?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Wagstaff. Vice Chair Nindell?
No.
Okay, fantastic. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I appreciate it, Dan, and take testimony from the applicant. And you said the applicant, you don't believe is here? Okay, fantastic. We'll go ahead and take public testimony. Is there anyone in the queue for public testimony on this item?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing since there was no public testimony, and the applicant isn't here. And at this time, we'll go ahead and open up discussion and questions of staff from the Planning Commission. Commissioner Grant, did you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Wagstaff?
No questions.
Vice Chair Nindell?
No.
Okay, with no questions from the Planning Commission at this time, I will entertain a motion on this item.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve from Commissioner Grant.
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Wagstaff. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Grant.
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer Hoffman appears absent. Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Yes.
Chair Duffel.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, item number three, variance number 22-1, an application for a 75-foot pole sign and a monument sign for the Maverick Fueling Station. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. The project site is located on the northwest corner of Palm Drive and Paul Road, immediately north of Interstate 10 and Palm Drive, within the commercial highway zone. The applicant, Maverick Inc., has filed a variance application for a 75-foot pole sign and a seven-and-a-half freestanding monument sign. The site plan, as shown here, indicates where the signage will be located. Number one is where the pole sign will be located, and number two is where the monument sign will be placed. The pole sign is proposed with a signed area of 445 square feet with a maximum height of 75 feet, which is 50 feet higher than what is currently allowed in the zoning code. The applicant is proposing an increased sign height to capture westbound and eastbound traffic to allow potential customers enough time to identify the retail center and take the Palm Drive off-ramp to access the site. This proposal also includes a monument sign, as shown here, with a height of seven-and-a-half feet and a signed area of 69-and-a-half feet, which exceeds the maximum allowed sign area of 32 square feet. The neighboring Arco Gas Station to the south has a pole sign height of approximately 49 feet and a signed area of approximately 156 square feet. And also, to the southwest, the existing cannabis retail storefront, Harborside, has a sign pole of 70 feet with a signed area of approximately 200 square feet. For reference, shown here are the approved elevations for the overall project. On your left is Phase 1, which is a 6,103-square-foot convenience store, and on your right would be Phase 2, which includes a future 2,981-square-foot QSR. On March 8, 2022, the City approved the Maverick Fueling Station, and in doing so, certified the mitigated negative decoration for the project. Pursuant to Section 15162A of the CECL regulations, once an M&amp;D has been certified for a project, no subsequent environmental review needs to be completed unless there are substantial changes to the project. With that said, this is consideration of variance number 22-1 for the proposed 75-foot pole sign and a monument sign for the Maverick Fueling Station, subject to the conditions of approval and findings for APN 660160029. Thank you.
Thank you for the staff report. At this time, we'll entertain questions of staff from the Planning Commission. I'd like to know on the, if we could pull the PowerPoint back up of the large sign, the one that we want to see from the freeway? That's it there. No, go back, go back to the, that one right there. Okay, fantastic. Noticing two different signs here, I'm assuming, and I want clarification, that one side of the sign has one look, the other side of the sign has the other look?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that for me. Are there any other questions of staff from the Planning Commission? Commissioner Grant?
I just wanted to know how many variances have we approved throughout in the city for this similar type of project?
So, I believe it was back in 2018, we approved a variance for the Harborside.
Is that the only one?
That I know of, yes.
That's certainly a recent one, yeah. We have approved other variances, but at this altitude, that's the only one in recent, probably the last six years, 10 years, yeah.
Okay, so the next question is, it is built to withstand the wind that we have that goes through this area, correct? And it does give them significant visibility from the freeway, from the I-10?
Yes, it will need to meet the wind speed of 130 miles per hour.
Thank you.
Now, I'll run off of that question on the wind speed of 130 miles an hour. Is that a ground wind speed or wind speed at maximum height?
I believe that would be max height.
So, Chairman, the height, the, the wind speed is designed for any structure. That's a generic wind speed. It's usually created to be above, way above and beyond the actual required wind speed, so it takes into account heights and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you very much, Eric. Commissioner Wagstaff, do you have any questions of staff?
How much taller than the Harborside sign is this?
Five feet. So, the Harborside is 70, and this one is proposed at 75.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wagstaff. Vice Chair Nindell?
I have nothing.
Fantastic, thank you very much. At this time, we will go ahead and open the public hearing and take testimony from the applicant if they are here.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Farman Shear. Good evening. My name is Farman Shear. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I'm the civil engineer for the project, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Grant?
I have none at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
No.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Just one question. The, the words and the numbers and prices and everything that are on this sign?
Yes.
Can it, it can be changed. I mean, you can put anything you want on the sign, right? Words, I mean?
They are digital, so they, they can be changed, except for the logo of the facility. The logo is, is the way it's shown.
Uh-huh. So, you wouldn't want words or numbers or anything above the logo?
Well, I mean, this is our standard sign package, that the logo and the pricing is combined in, in there, and the logo is important.
I just ask because I wouldn't mind seeing, because of the size of this sign?
Yes.
Something like "Welcome to Desert Hot Springs."
We have something other than this planned to make up for that. We do have a, a large water tank that's going to be installed for, for water services for the project, and that's pretty tall, and it will have-
But not as tall as that sign.
It won't be 75 feet tall, but it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty good size, 180,000-gallon tank, and we are designing a, you know, a, something decorative and for Desert Hot Springs that will be mounted on the sign, on the-
On the tank.
Tank.
Okay.
Yes.
Wonderful. Any other questions for the applicant from the commission?
No.
Okay, wonderful. You can go ahead and take a seat, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we will go ahead and take testimony from the public for those in favor, opposed, or neutral on the item. Do we have anyone in queue for public comments on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay, fantastic. With no public comments, there's no need to come back up and refute anything, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment and close the public hearing, move on to Planning Commission discussion and consideration. Commissioner Grant, did you have anything that you'd like to discuss on this item further?
Actually, I'm fine with the sign and the variance being approved, so I can, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, if you're ready to make a motion, I'd be willing to hear it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance number 22-1 for the proposed 75-foot pole sign and a monument sign for the Maverick Fueling Station, subject to the conditions of approvals and findings.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Vice Chair Nindell. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Grant.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayor Hoffman appears absent. Commissioner Wagstaff?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Aye.
Chair Duffel?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to the applicant. Moving on to item number four, conditional use permit number 21-23, a consideration of an amendment to a previously approved project conditional use permit number 06-17. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. The site is located on the north side of San Jacinto Lane, approximately 655 feet east of Little Morongo Road, within the light industrial zone. Shown here is an image of the current site looking north. The previously approved project, CUP 06-17, included two APNs, 665-030-018 and 019, and consisted of two two-story attached buildings totaling approximately 86,715 square feet and with a height of approximately 50 feet. The applicant has filed a conditional use permit application to amend a previously approved CUP for a cannabis operation on a vacant 1.26-acre parcel. The project proposes the development of a two-story building totaling approximately 27,296 square feet and will be for cannabis uses on APN 665-030-018 only. Similar to previously approved cannabis facilities in the area, the permanent building facade would consist of three-dimensional forms and architectural elements in the style of contemporary architecture with neutral gray and white color scheme. The proposed landscaping will consist of Mexican bird of paradise and blue palo verde along with low-level plantings and a wrought iron fencing to visually enhance, protect, and blend the cannabis facility into its surroundings. On May 2, 2017, the City Council approved the previous project, and in doing so, adopted the mitigated negative decoration for the project pursuant to Section 15162A of the CECL regulations. Once an M&amp;D has been adopted for a project, no subsequent environmental review needs to be completed. With that, this is consideration of conditional use permit number 21-23, an amendment to a previously approved project for the development of a two-story building totaling approximately 27,296 square feet on a 1.26-acre parcel for APN 665-030-018. That concludes my report. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your staff report. Do we have any questions of staff at this time from the Planning Commission? Commissioner Grant?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Not at the moment.
Vice Chair Nindell?
No.
Okay, fantastic. I don't have any questions at the moment, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and take testimony from the applicant.
This is Amir with Amir Engineering. I'm on behalf of the applicant, Henrik, and I'm civil engineer for this project. I'm here to answer if you have any questions.
Fantastic, thank you very much, sir. Do we have any questions for the applicant from the Planning Commission at this time? Commissioner Grant?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
No questions.
Vice Chair Nindell?
No.
Okay, sir, I have no questions for you at this time. Go ahead and take a seat, just in case, okay? Go ahead and find out if we have any testimony from the public on those in favor, opposed, or neutral on the project. Do we have anyone in queue?
No, we do not.
Wonderful. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing since we have nothing for the applicant to rebut and open up for Planning Commission discussion and consideration. Ms. Grant, did you have any discussion?
No, not at this time, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Grant? I'm sorry. Commissioner, Commissioner Wagstaff?
No, no questions.
Vice Chair Nindell?
No.
And I have no questions at this time either. I don't have any discussion either, so we'll go ahead and entertain a motion if we have
I'll make a motion to approve consideration of conditional use permit number 21-24 to amend a previously approved project.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Grant? Commissioner Mayor Hoffman, absent. Commissioner Wagstaff?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Yes, aye.
Chair Duffel?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. At this time, we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute recess. We will come back at 6:33. Welcome back, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. We are going to be moving on to item number five on the agenda, and just so everyone is aware, item number four and item number five are worded very similar, and they're only one digit apart in case there's any confusion. But item number five is conditional use permit number 21-24, a consideration of an amendment to a previously approved project conditional use permit number 06-17. May I have a staff report, please?
So, this, this site is located on the north side of San Jacinto Lane. This is approximately 800 feet east of Little Morongo Road, also within the light industrial zone. Shown here is a existing site facing north. This is also for a previously approved project, CUP 06-17, included two APNs, 665-030-018 and 019, and also consisted of a two-story attached building totaling approximately 86,715 square feet. The applicant has filed a conditional use permit application to amend the previously approved project for cannabis operation on a 1.26-acre parcel. The applicant proposes a development of a two-story building also totaling approximately 27,296 square feet and will also be for cannabis uses on APN 665-030-019 only. The proposed elevations will be mirror of CUP 21-23 with similar elevations and color scheme. The landscaping will include substantial plantings along the street frontage and throughout the site. The project site perimeter will also be enclosed with a wrought iron tubular steel fencing. On May 2, 2017, the City Council approved the previously approved project, and in doing so, adopted the mitigated negative decoration for the project. This is for consideration of conditional use permit number 21-24, an amendment to a previously approved project for the development of a two-story building totaling approximately 27,296 square feet on a 1.26-acre parcel for APN 665-030-019. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for your staff report, Patricia. At this time, we'll entertain questions of staff from the Planning Commission. Commissioner Grant?
I have none at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grant. Commissioner Wagstaff?
No questions.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Nothing, no.
Okay, no questions for staff. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing and take testimony from the applicant.
Hi, this is Amir with Amir Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Answer any question you guys have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions of the applicant at this time? Commissioner Grant?
I have none at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
No questions.
Vice Chair Nindell?
No.
And I have no questions either, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take testimony for, from the public for those in favor, opposed, or neutral on this item. Do we have anyone in queue?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much. Since there is no need for an applicant rebuttal, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open up Planning Commission discussion and consideration. Do we have any discussion? Commissioner Grant? Commissioner Wagstaff?
No.
Vice Chair Nindell?
No.
Wonderful. At this time, I will entertain a motion if we have one?
I'll make a motion, consideration of the conditional use permit.
Okay, is that a motion to-
Approve?
Approve conditional use permit number, extension for conditional use permit number 21-24 to amend a previously approved project?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Vice Chair Nindell seconds. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Grant? Commissioner Mayor Hoffman, absent. Commissioner Wagstaff?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Aye.
Chairman Duffel?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. Moving on to item number six of the agenda, Palm Spot Holdings LLC Cannabis Entertainment Facility, APN number 666-300-006 and 007, CUP number 22-1, and TPM 22-1. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, fellow Planning Commissioners. This item is conditional use permit 22-1 and tentative parcel map 22-1, and I do have a PowerPoint presentation, and I will preface that with, it got shortened up quite a bit from about 22 slides down a notch. The applicant is here with us tonight, and they would request it to give their own presentation, so didn't want to be redundant in showing you the same slides and seeing the same thing. So, I will get right into it. Here's a little background. On January 4, 2022, the applicant, Palm Spot Holdings LLC, applied for conditional use permit 22-1, and then on January 10, 2022, the applicant applied for tentative parcel map 22-1 to develop 15 buildings, which includes a cannabis lounge and entertainment center with a cannabis cultivation facility on two vacant parcels in the commercial business park and light industrial zoning districts. Sections 5.50 and 17.180 of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code allows for cannabis entertainment facilities in commercial districts and cannabis cultivations in industrial districts, subject to a conditional use permit approved by the Planning Commission and a regulatory permit approved by the city manager. Here's a vicinity map with the location, the two vacant parcels, APN 666-300-006 and 007. And as you could see on the map, it is on the south side of Dillon, a little west of Little Morongo Road, and then when you can take a look at the location, you see the Solar Farm to the east. A now vacant was K-9 Metro- A now vacant was K-9 Metro Training Center to the west, and then just a little further to the west, you do see Angel View. The discussion is this project, the site occupies approximately 8.45 acres of vacant land south of Dillon Road. The project proposes the development of 15 buildings to support a cannabis retail entertainment and cultivation facility. The project will consist of: one two-story 16,000-square-foot entertainment facility building, one 240-square-foot guardhouse, one two-story 10,000-square-foot showroom storage building, and 12 two-story cannabis cultivation buildings at 19,000 square feet each. For the environmental analysis, in accordance with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, the initial study determined that the development of the proposed cannabis entertainment facility would not have a significant impact on the environment with the implementation of mitigation measures, and a mitigation... A mitigated negative declaration was completed. Now, last slide. It is our recommendation that staff recommends the Planning Commission approve conditional use permit 22-1 and tentative parcel map 22-1, subject to their conditions of approval. And as stated, the applicant does have a presentation, and so if you have any questions for that, but I'm available for anything else, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dan. Do we have any questions of staff at this time from the Planning Commission? Commissioner Grant?
I have none at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Not at this time.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Yeah, just one question. Can you tell me how the city is defining entertainment in the context of a cannabis business like this?
Absolutely. So, when the ordinance was passed by the city council, entertainment facilities, if they were allowed to have the retail component of cannabis, had to have one or the others, and they listed out either, and this is what the list said, and it was bowling alley, movie theater, concert venue, et cetera. This will have stages, it will fall under the concert venue sort of umbrella, but it will also have additional things there, and if you saw, like a lounge, a cannabar, a restaurant, indoor pool, terrace. It will all be located upstairs, too, and that will also could be a very good question for the applicant.
Okay.
Okay, with no further questions of staff at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and take testimony from the applicant. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Duffel, fellow commissioners. My name is Mike Rowe. I'm with MSA Consulting, our offices in Rancho Mirage, and it's kind of exciting to be here again. We were here for one of your first applications when the city enacted their medicinal cannabis ordinance and have worked on numerous projects, and it's kind of great to be back here to work on the first marijuana entertainment facility that will fall under your new ordinance. And the client is here to be able to present something, I think, that's pretty exciting. It's called a spot. You can see the location, like Mr. McVeigh said, and thank you very much for your presentation to go through kind of the background. I'll go maybe through the bells and whistles of it, the guts of what's... How this is going to operate, and then we're here to answer any questions. The architect, unfortunately, he is not available, but he is available by phone if we need to. We're going to try to zoom him in, but I guess we couldn't. But he is also available if we need to have questions. So, these are just some slides. I'll come back at these, but this kind of gives a little graphic representation of what we're looking at from the entrance, the main feature of the project itself, the entertainment facility, and then working its way back into the actual cultivation. So, as you enter in from the left-hand side of the picture, the north side, you'll pass through or pass by the entertainment facility, heading down straight into both a public and a private type of a facility. It's a little hard, hopefully you can see this, but the green building is going to be the kind of the wholesale portion of the ability to purchase the product, and then the entertainment facility will be more the retail side with also a portion of the site available for kind of an educational gallery, a way to kind of show the people the cannabis industry. The little orange building is a guard shack. That will then control gates. That will allow people to go back into the back buildings, which are the cultivation facilities and the manufacturing facilities for the product. So, what we have here is a portion on the right-hand side of your picture, which is going to be the actual, the working side of the development, which is then going to be secured with the gates. The left-hand side will be the public side, the recreational side, to be able to allow for the purchase of the product and the entertainment. This is just another version of a site plan. The reason we did this is we had... We asked for an option to be able to allow us the configuration of our entertainment facility to go either on the north side or the south side of at least the plant. It's actually the east or west side. The reason that we did that is because it is a two-story. The proportion of the site is going to have the recreation side of this facility. You can see the blue, there'll be a pool on the upstairs. And because we wanted to take advantage of the westerly views, we want that to be opened up so you can enjoy the day, but we also have a little breeze up here, and we want to make sure that you can still enjoy the upper side. So, if you have the building configured in this way, it's kind of a windbreak, but we don't get the view. If you have it this way, we've got some ways that we think we can combat it. We wanted to make sure that we're going to build this one way or the other, and we're trying to do it in such a way that we can take advantage of the westerly views. This is the preferred method, but if we just can't make it work out from an architectural standpoint, we want the ability to switch it so we can still go forward. Just to get into the kind of the detail of the... This is the recreational side. This is the lower portion, and you can see kind of in the center of the building is where the secured area is. Everybody will enter there, and they'll either go into the left, which is going to have kind of a museum, show about a little history, a little gallery of the cannabis industry, the retail components, be able to purchase the product. And then you can go to the right as you enter, and you go upstairs where it says up to the lounge, and there's stairs up that will then be able to go up to the lounge area, and it'll be a controlled environment through the security gate with the security guard. On both sides, you see two of those stairs. Those are emergency exit stairs only, so their only access will be able to be controlled into the downstairs facility as well as the upstairs facility. And the upstairs facility is going to have the pool, it's going to have the stage, the ability for entertainment, for restaurant, a couple cannabars, so that way you could purchase on a retail basis the product and be able to enjoy it on the site. And you can see the overhead doors and the open terrace. This is the configuration that takes advantage of that westerly view. So, we want to be able to open those up and take advantage of it, so you have an indoor and an outdoor opportunity to be able to enjoy whichever type of product that you want. And then, this is the retail side of it, or the wholesale side of it, I should say. As you come into the product or the project, this was that kind of light blue building that'll have a kind of a larger scale type of an opportunity with some storage for be able to do even the other retailers in the area that they can come in and purchase the product that's going to be provided by the facility. This is a generic cannabis grow cultivation facility, kind of... You guys have seen them all the way through this thing, so you see how that works. That's how the other 12 buildings are located down there. These will all be in the backside, kind of the working side of it, that's going to be in the secured area in the back. We've got the elevations that is kind of depicting our recreational side of it. You can see it's a very fun design, and I think it's going to be very attractive with the, especially on the upper floor, palm trees coming through the facility, through the ceiling with the swimming pool and the bars to really give an opportunity. And you can see on that bottom portion, that bottom elevation, those windows will be designed to open up so you can have the indoor/outdoor opportunity, and then the outdoor space will have screening and netting to come down to help secure you from the elements, because that will always be open. This is a elevation of the working side. These are very simple buildings, but still trying to have some architectural look to them with some differentiation in color. We've got some glazing for the administration, but it's really, these are the two-story cultivation, two-story grow buildings that will be able to serve the site on the backside, some more elevations of those. Here, we're trying to show, if you look at that crown overhead hydraulic door, the shade screen, this is the concept that we're looking at doing on that recreational facility, be able to open that area up so that way you can truly enjoy the outdoor elements, the outdoor activity, but then close it if the elements become too severe, but still be able to have the view of the mountains to the west. And so, this is how we're going to propose with the colors and the scheme for being able to have our outdoor site. This is a graphic, and we have a little video that I think really depicts kind of what this project's going to look like. It's a great shot of me. So, this is the entertainment facility as you come in. This is the drive as you come in with the wholesale portion of the project right there, the smaller building in the front, and then we opened up glazing on one of the larger buildings to help have a sense of arrival. So, very, very simple, very quick, and you know, without... Can I get the clipper back? So, these elevations really are what put that together. You can see in the upper right how, when you enter the site, you have the recreational facility to the left, and you have the wholesale facility straight ahead with a little bit of glazing to block up the massing of that first building that's going to be there. You can turn around right there if you can't get to the guards, and you'll actually become right to the front of the drop-off area of that entertainment facility, so that way you can go in and enjoy yourself. Large overhangs on the building, open air on the one side, closed, so that way you can have a controlled restaurant on the other side, both of them being able to enjoy and partake in the cannabar. So, it's kind of it for my presentation. We're very excited to be here, very happy to be here. If you have any questions, like I said, the architect is online. If you have any questions for him, the client is also here to talk about kind of his vision, if you have any questions for him as well.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. I do have one quick question for you. The smoking portion of cannabis, California's been real strict on smoking and smoking indoors. How is this facility going to get around being able to smoke indoors?
The way that we have this set up, and that's kind of why we tried to emphasize the indoor/outdoor aspect of this, we do have two separate sections. So, you'll have the indoor section, which is to the right of the screen, the outdoor section, which is the pool, and so that we have the ability to open those up so that even the indoor can experience the outdoor, but that's where you could not have the smoking environment, but the outdoor patio area is where you could have the smoking environment, a cannabar both associated with either side.
Okay, so, smoking cannabis on-site will be done outdoors...
Outdoors.
...as opposed to edibles being able to partake indoors, if you will?
Correct.
That was my biggest question on this project.
Yeah, we tried to think of everything, and yes, we're going to try to cross all the Ts, but that's how we're going to get through this, so that way we can still have the enjoyment of both opportunities.
Okay, and the other thing that I wanted to mention, I noticed the giant marijuana leaves on the side of the building.
The palm fronds?
Though I think the design is really cool, I think it makes the architecture pop. I don't think it... Personally, I don't think that it's going to be something that would fly in the community, but we'll see. That's just me. Are there any other questions of the applicant?
If I could?
Oh, yes.
We appreciate that, and we understand that, and being up here doing a lot of these projects, we understand where you guys are coming from. But the intent of what we're trying to do here is educate people, and this client really is sincere about being able to produce a museum, a gallery, an explanation of what cannabis is, what the industry really is, and how it goes from one, from seed to soul, if you will, from one side to the other. So, what they're trying to do is not really hide in the shadows, but not be upfront in your face, but do something kind of attractive to be able to invite you in, to be able to then understand, go through the galleries and the opportunities, and then partake and not have any fear of it. That's kind of the intent of what we're trying to do here.
Thank you very much for that. Commissioner Grant, did you have any questions for the applicant? The floor is yours, ma'am.
First of all, I think this is a great project.
Thank you.
But I have some concerns, especially when we are bringing something like this into the community. It is already stigma within the cannabis... Well, I don't want to say cannabis community, but with people and how they feel, it's a perceived and perception that this is a plant, this is medicine. So, when we use words like recreation, it indicates and promotes something else, so I think it would be better if we use things like adult-use cannabis facility. That's one thing. Then, the next thing that I have, where it's a concern for me, is... Let me move the mic in my face. I wanted to know, how is this, is it ADA compliant and accessible? Because there are a lot of people on the medicinal side that would love to participate in adult-use activities, but they are restricted by maybe, say, mobility and those type of challenges. And so, I know, when I think of the second story, I didn't know if there's an elevator or something there that somebody could access, you know, as far... You know, because veterans, a lot of times, you know, they use this for PTSD and different other type of things. So, I just wanted to make sure that we have some type of accessibility. And then, what else? Okay, so, is there a cannabar type of, we call it technician, I don't know, and if anybody else uses it? Is there somebody that will be there when you're having infused cocktails on the facility and premises around the pool? Is there somebody that's making sure that dosing is sufficient? Is that available? Will you have that? I didn't see it listed, and those are just some concerns there. And then, as far as the type of lifeguards, that's just another thing that I'd like to know, find out as well. But I think it's a great project overall. Just want to, you know, make sure that there's some concerns that are addressed because of the stigma, the implication, and the war on drugs, but I think it's a great project. We need to have it here. I don't have a... I don't see any issues. I understand where maybe some of the other commissioners might see the leaves, but back in cannibalism and things like that, they use that. It's a sacred type of ceremony, so it doesn't bother me. I think people need to get educated, so if that's what you're in the business of doing, I say thank you.
Can I address her for the questions?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I appreciate your comments and your questions, and do appreciate your, at least, ability to look at the project as for what it is and really the excitement that we're trying to bring to here. I completely agree with the recreational use, the adult use, the medicinal use, and I think that's kind of the point of this lower floor, is to be able to help use the education of what marijuana really is, to be able to open it up to the masses so that it's not always thought of, and I agree, the stigma of just one side or the other, there is an important use for marijuana in this industry for medicinal purposes. And that's the whole reason why we have this lower floor. You mentioned the ADA, completely ADA accessible. We'll make sure of all of that. There is actually by the stair, there's an elevator that goes upstairs, and so everybody will still come through in the controlled environment, through the guards, sign in and make sure all of the... That the access is going to be controlled for the right people to come in, but that anybody that does come in has the ability to go wherever they want into the store, be able to be guided around the store, be able to be guided upstairs to the facilities, so that they can all be compliant, including the working space in the back for the two-story that we're going to be having back there. The dosing expert, I'm going to let the client, if he wants to answer that, but I can assure you that, yes, there will be, you know, proper infusion for any of the material, any of the edibles that are available for the cannabars to be able to be presented, so that way it's obviously safe. Their business is to make sure that they continue to do business all the way through this and make sure everybody's safe. And a lifeguard in the pool, it's not really going to be a diving, swimming pool, it's going to be more of a sitting, waiting pool, but there will be the proper facilities, proper permits pulled by the health department to make sure that all that's taken care of. Hope that answers your questions.
Yeah, my only concern, like I said, the lifeguard in case someone that may have limited accessibility, just a concern that somebody could assist them up, that's the thing.
No, there will be security around the entire time for all of those purposes, just like any other bar, if you will.
Any other questions, Ms. Grant?
Not at this time, but I may have more.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wagstaff?
If you could pass me up for a minute, let Chairman Nindell...
Okay, Vice Chair Nindell?
I'm curious, who is your target audience or customer, and how will you advertise?
I'll let the client answer that, but I'm going to pretty much say everybody that can be and will be and want to be educated, to be able to use this, obviously for medicinal, for recreational purposes, and it gives just a different kind of a venue for them to come out and enjoy the marijuana in different aspects of it, not just the, you know, some of the edibles and some of the smoking. But, Mike, you want to speak on that?
Thank you, sir. If you could go ahead and mention your name for the record, and you can go ahead and continue on that question.
My name is Mike Leff. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much for having us. Yes, like Mike mentioned, we are all very excited for this project, and the question for the audience... And the question for the audience, it's anybody who's 21 and older that is our audience. And what we're really hoping to accomplish with this project is bring people in and to give them the real understanding of what this plant is all about. The plant is as old as the planet itself and it has enormous amount of good in it. It's just, there's so much stigma that was basically weaponized over the years by the politicians, by the people that don't understand it, by just regular folks, doesn't really matter. But the point is, all of that can be taken away with the proper understanding of what this plant is all about. And it's, when I say it's a plant, this plant is like, think of it like crude oil. Oil in itself is nothing, but what you can make out of it is a gazillion products. Well, in the old days, cannabis plant was the oil. You could make just about everything that we make today out of oil, you could make out of plant itself back 2,000 years ago and a lot of people did make that. With the technology that we have today, we can make even more good things out of this plant and put it to good uses. There is, obviously, there is medicinal uses, there are industrial uses, but more so, this is actually a very environment-friendly plant. If it's done with care and with understanding of what the symbiosis between the environment and the plant production is, all of that can be put to a very good use. And we, as a company and as a team, hoping to bring that to market on scale so that people really understand what it's all about.
Fantastic, thank you. Vice Chairman Nindell, did that answer your question, sir?
It did. And what's kind of behind it is not a criticism, but an observation of the cannabis industry here in town. Maybe I'm missing something, but the cannabis industry here is not really engaged with the city, with the residents. Example, a Christmas parade, there is no float from the cannabis industry. City events, there's no booth from the cannabis industry. And this, what you're doing is a first. It's fun, it's entertainment. I'm hoping may, you know, maybe an open house for this residence or some kind of advertising to the residents, because this is for the first time a place where we can go if we want to, to be entertained or sit in a lounge or whatever.
We'll make it open house, 365 days a year for all the residents, literally.
How will you advertise?
We'll advertise by many means. Obviously, community outreach is going to go out as well. We're going to actually have people and staff who's going to, who's going to go at the local events, who's going to go to the local supermarkets, plazas, who's going to make it aware that we exist in this community and we're here to stay.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Nindell. Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. First of all, I think it's a great idea to piggyback off Chairman Nindell. It's a great way to bridge the gap between the commercial growing industry and the citizens of the town. I love that part. I love the architecture, all that. Question I do have is employees, what's, how many employees? And that'll lead into my second question.
When the site is going to be fully built and operational, we anticipate of having 330 employees.
Okay.
Full-time.
Which leads into my second question. This is more for the wholesale side, parking for that, for employees.
It's all provisioned.
What's that?
It's all provisioned for that.
Okay.
If I can add to that, because we have the public and the private side of it, both of them are sized according to the operations and because they're also going to be offsetting and shifting, we have that, we have the ability to even share parking if we have to for some of those rush environments.
Okay. Only reason I ask is Little Morongo right now is the current corridor or two bunch palms and get a lot of parking on the road. Dillon Road's not particularly set up for on-road parking, so it's just a question.
We're not anticipating any off-street parking. We've obviously done a few of these and so we want to make sure we do understand the consideration. And because of all the buildings where they're set up, they're even going to be rotated so that way the parking can even work and share all the way on the backside as well as the frontside.
Awesome.
Okay.
Other than that, I love the architecture, I think it's a gorgeous building.
It's fun.
Not opposed to the cannabis leaves all over the side?
We can call it a frond.
What, palm fronds, whatever, not sure.
We think it's part of the education. I would really, you know, ask you to look at the opportunity of what, not only what we're trying to do here with this first building, what we're trying to do here with the education, but what we're trying to do to bring it out of the shadows so that way it's not maybe in your face, but at the same time it's not being hidden either. Let's talk about it, let's enjoy it, let's use it for what it is.
No, I can appreciate that. No further questions.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Wagstaff. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Grant?
Okay, I think these are my last questions. I'm looking at the kitchen in the restaurant and just in the can of bar and I need to know, I would like to know, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
I just want to make sure.
Trying to.
I have a lot going on right now. And I'm too close. With the kitchen and the can of bar, with the infusions, will they be made in-house or will they be prepackaged? That is one question I just would like to know because some people, like I'm assuming you're going retail from somebody else, you're purchasing from someone else, like the infusions, there's a few, I think this, can't think of his name, but high-grade, I think is a can of beverage. I've had the opportunity to meet and talk to them. So are you purchasing products like that to be able to have within your can of bar and within your restaurant? That's what I'm asking. Or is it you're going to try to go another direction with this?
There is actually several things that are being discussed at the moment. So infusions, if you may, it's, if I may, it's basically a syrup. So we can infuse the syrup ourselves, we can buy the concoction from a number of wholesalers, or we can actually do a combination of both. So the way it's actually going to be sold at the can of bar, we don't know yet. And the reason why we don't know yet, because the technology is ever evolving. So by the time this is going to become live and operational, we might use all three or we'll pick one. And the reason I say that, because the number of terpenes or basically what constitutes a flavor, right now there's about 6,000 of it. By the time we're going to be finished with the project, there's going to be probably a billion, if I'm not mistaken. Because the way this thing escalates and progresses every single day just allows us for so many different opportunities that just didn't exist yesterday. So the answer to your question is whatever we're going to do is going to be basically whatever state of California will allow it and what we're available at that time. And to your earlier question about the dosage, it's 100 to 120 milligrams of what's being allowed and that's exactly what's going to be dispensed at all times.
Let me see, that was the answer I'm looking for.
Okay, are there any other questions of the applicant at this time? Fantastic. If you gentlemen like to take a seat?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will go ahead and take testimony from the public, those in favor, opposed, or neutral on this item. Do we have anyone in queue?
No, we do not.
Fantastic, no one in queue. With that being said, there's no reason for you gentlemen to have to come up and rebut anything. We will go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to Planning Commission discussion. Who would like to start the discussion?
You brought up the palm leaves.
I'll lead off with that. I'm, you know, personally, I'm not opposed to it. I am behind the cannabis industry 110% as long as they continue to follow the rules and do things the right way and in some areas create new rules that are the right rules to follow. My concern is, again, I'm not, I don't have a problem with the cannabis leaves on the side of the building or palm fronds or whatever you'd like to call them. But I'm not making a decision up here for me. I'm making a decision up here based off of the folks that live in the city of Desert Hot Springs and what they would want. That's the responsibility that I've been charged with. Listening to the public, I do understand that there is a stigma and I don't necessarily completely agree with that stigma. Again, I am supportive of our marijuana industry and the education of that industry to the public. Unfortunately, sometimes we have to take baby steps to get there. And I think plastering marijuana leaves all over one side of the building on a main artery coming into town or out of town, even though it is currently in the middle of nowhere, that could create an even more negative stigma. But that's just my opinion on it. Commissioner Grant?
I understand where you're coming from and I once would have thought that as well. However, looking at what they're proposing from a standpoint, it's a plant. We've allowed so many cultivation, what is it, retail that we have here, it's not like the community is pretty much oblivious to what's going on. I think that we have a duty to basically inform them and advocate for the plant. As from a standpoint, it's like a strawberry plant, well, maybe not so much like a strawberry, but like tomatoes. And I think a few of us grow. So it's some of the same principles that you use from gardening, so I don't see why a leaf would be a direct problem unless there is something within our ordinance that prohibits us from going ahead and placing that on there. So that would be a question maybe that we could ask.
Thank you, Commissioner Grant. With her bringing, with Commissioner Grant bringing up that point, is there currently anything that would prevent us from allowing marijuana leaves on the side of this building?
I do not believe we currently have anything that would restrict them from having that artwork on the side of their building.
Okay, well, that clears that up quite a bit then. Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion?
I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Grant. I think that the theory behind this project is to bridge the gap between the stigma of it and the citizens and I really don't have an issue with it. I see what they're going for and I'm okay with it.
Vice Chairman Nindell?
Nothing.
All right, fantastic. Is there any other discussion?
I know, I'll make a motion to approve if we're ready.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve and a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Grant?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayor Hoffman, absent. Commissioner Wagstaff?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Nindell?
Aye.
Chairman Duffel?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the applicant. Hey, moving on to the next item. Item number seven, a resolution of the Planning Commission recommending to the city council to, number one, amend general plan amendment zoning map to correct a typographical error to reflect the proper zoning designation for the area bounded by Yucca Drive, 12th Street, Palm Drive, and Mesquite Avenue. And two, adopt an ordinance to amend the general plan zoning map to be consistent with the general plan use map for that same location. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, we do. We'd have a small presentation. So, good evening, Chairman and rest of the Planning Commission. What we have today is an amendment for our zoning map, so I will do a short little presentation for everybody. So the timeline, the way it worked is we had found a discrepancy in the zoning map. So we looked at and verified that a lot of the data that we had was correct as far as the land use map. That allowed us to move forward on drafting this and getting to the actual ordinance. So as you can see, we're taking it to the Planning Commission today and then if passed, it'll go to city council two different times, one for the first reading, one for the second. So the background, the proposed amendment to the general plan update and zoning ordinance is to amend the general plan zoning map to be consistent with the approved general plan land use map. The previously approved map contains several, and when I say the previously approved zoning map, contains several typographical errors which have been revised and reflected in the proposed corrected general plan zoning map, exhibit one in your staff report. The parcels with typographical errors found with the general plan land use policy map and zoning map are located in the neighborhood bounded by Yucca Drive, 12th Street, Palm Drive, and Mesquite Avenue. So what is the issue? The general plan zoning map is inconsistent with the general plan land use map. As you can see below, there's a little bit of an issue there. The consultant who drafted the map verified that the land use map has been submitted, he verified, he submitted a letter stating that the general plan land use map was correct and that the map that needed revision was the general plan zoning map. Below here, you can see the, it's a little bit hard to see, so what I did is I zoomed in on the actual parcels that below, so you can actually see the, how was the error actually occurred. It's, you can just see the dark maroon parcels on the right-hand side, those are obviously the correct side. So the parcels with the typographical errors are found with the general plan land use, found with the general plan land use policy map and zoning map are located in the neighborhood bound by Yucca Drive, 12th Street, Palm Drive, and Mesquite. The corresponding zoning district should be either visitor-serving mixed, which is VSM, or visitor-serving commercial, VSC. Since the area predominantly consists of existing single-family units, the VSM appears to be the appropriate zone district that should be applied to this area and thereby establish consistency with the visitor-serving VS land use designation. The VSM district allows both visitor-serving and residential uses, although not concurrently on one property. As such, it is recommended that this area be designated VSM under the zoning map. So the land use and zoning map, the important factors to consider is currently it's inconsistent with the general plan land use map. It wasn't oversight. The RENA numbers for our housing element were correct and the land use map did reflect that. So none of that is being changed whatsoever. The zoning map needs to harmonize with the land use map. Sequo was completed under the general plan update, so that was done. And this is to be as well, in compliance with HCD. The required steps for adopting the map are, have been done. So with that, the staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Desert Hot Springs, California, recommending to the city council to, one, amend general plan amendment zoning map to correct a typographic error to reflect the proper zoning designation for the area bounded by Yucca Drive, 12th Street, Palm Drive, and Mesquite Avenue. And two, adopt an ordinance to amend the general plan zoning map to be consistent with the general plan land use map for that same location. And that concludes my report and I am here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Eric, very much. At this time, we'll entertain questions of staff from the Planning Commission. Commissioner Grant, do you have any questions for staff on this item?
I have none at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grant. Commissioner Wagstaff?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Wagstaff. Vice Chairman Nindell?
No questions.
No questions? Okay, fantastic. Thank you again for the staff report. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing and take public testimony from those in favor, opposed, or in a neutral position on this item. Do we have anyone in the queue?
No, we do not.
Fantastic, we have no one in the queue. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and have Planning Commission discussion and a motion if one, if someone has one. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Grant?
No.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
No questions.
Vice Chairman Nindell?
No.
Okay, at this time, I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Desert Hot Springs, California, recommending to the city council to, one, amend general plan amendment zoning map to correct a typographical error to reflect the proper zoning designation for the area bounded by Yucca Drive, 12th Street, Palm Drive, and Mesquite Avenue. And two, adopt an ordinance to amend the general plan zoning map to be consistent with the general plan land use map for that same location. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Vice Chairman Nindell. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Grant?
Absent.
Commissioner Mayor Hoffman is absent. Commissioner Wagstaff?
Approve.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Yes.
Chair Duffel?
Aye.
Motion passes with Commissioner Grant abstaining.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda, recommendation to the City Council, an ordinance amending section 17 dot 180 dot 048, allowing marijuana entertainment facilities to be located in any downtown commercial district with a conditional use permit. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, I have a staff report for you. So as you heard, this is to amend the, to allow for marijuana facilities in the downtown district. So timeline for the ordinance, we have received several developers interested in bringing these types of facilities. It has been a number, has been a number of people coming forward interested. So we reviewed the municipal code and drafted an amendment to help manage that. The staff report was created and now we are bringing forward this to you today. Planning Commission may tend, if approved, it'll go to City Council for the first reading as well as a second. So reasons why to allow marijuana entertainment facilities in the downtown district, obviously the economics, tourism, and entertainment, those are reasons that why we even opened the idea of bringing entertainment facilities. This would just be bringing it to the downtown. The impact that we, that we see is, obviously, we'd like to see the farmers here locally have more options and more revenues that they can actually get to and have their products used here locally. So having these opportunities for them will open up the cannabis tourism that's being generated, the cannabis spa tourism that's also being generated right now. Outdoor activities, a lot of people do like to consume and go and do outdoor activities such as hiking, which we have amazing trails here. The local attractions that we have here, people do like to come out here, look at the local vintage signs from the spas and just enjoy our amazing weather here as well as obviously our mineral water. We do have food parks coming into the downtown, so it's just, it's bringing more attention to that downtown corridor and really promoting people to consume local products. As you've heard from one of the previous projects, it's important to have more areas for these people to consume and the development interest is there. So obviously factors to consider, the guidance, it's, we talked about how it's important to have cannabis be used correctly. So having these types of locations allows for people to have staff oversee this and prevent any misuse of cannabis products. The economics, it obviously helps having more retail options to generate additional revenue through both direct and indirect impacts. The City of Desert Hot Springs is already known for being cannabis-friendly, innovative, and forward-thinking, so this is just one additional thing. And the downtown district will benefit from additional foot traffic that's generated from these types of facilities. So that staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Desert Hot Springs, California, amending chapter 17 point 180 point 048 marijuana entertainment facilities and table 17 point 12 point 01 to allow for cannabis entertainment facilities in CD, which is the commercial downtown zoned districts. And that concludes my report and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Eric. Do we have any questions of staff from the Planning Commission? Commissioner Grant?
Well, I guess to reiterate what I mentioned earlier, if we're actually going to do the job and put into place, I think, effective ordinance that we're proposing, number one, the wording needs to be correct. It is really a very, we're dangerous word to use marijuana at this time, especially with you're thinking about how many cannabis industry thought leaders are really fighting and advocating to basically change the stigma and we're still using words like marijuana. Number one, we should be using cannabis facility. It should be anything that we're doing, we should make sure that we use adult use facilities, adult use cannabis facilities. That way, we will not actually intend to look, I mean, I want to say, the markets, we're thinking about adults. Sometimes when you use that word marijuana, it goes to recreational, delineates down to the youth. That's a concern, so we need to think about that, make sure that staff basically is on par with the rest of everybody and uses the words cannabis and adult use. That's very important. Outside of that, for me, my questions are pretty much all over the place. I have concerns because I don't believe that basically approving this particular ordinance when we don't have other measures in place as far as enforcement, if we're going to approve something where it allows for consumption, I think it's well and great and intended, but we don't have other things in place.
Ms. Grant, I hate to cut you off. There will be a moment for what you're talking about right now. Currently, we're on questions from staff of the Planning Commission.
Okay, so let me get my question out. Let me ask this particular question. Do we have something that allows for consumption in the local downtown area? That's all I want to know, that allows for consumption?
No, we currently don't have anything to allow for consumption in the downtown.
Okay.
And that's what, that's what this ordinance would potentially do after it goes to the City Council and the City Council makes their decision, correct?
That is correct. This is to amend the code to allow, currently, the downtown district is not allowed, it's not allowed for marijuana entertainment facilities. And the reason that I say marijuana entertainment facilities, that's how it's written in our code.
So then do we have something that in the provisions as far, as far as law enforcement that protects individuals from when they consume from not getting a DUI if they consume outside in a downtown district?
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, permitted locations marijuana entertainment facilities are currently or shall only be located in commercial districts, industrial districts, mixed-use corridor districts in the city. That's the way it's worded right now. But there's also an except commercial downtown district. So this ordinance is removing the except part. So it'll be in any commercial district, including the downtown district. But currently, you can, you can, it's allowed in a commercial district, industrial district, and mixed-use corridor. This is not to allow it, it's just to allow it in the downtown corridor, downtown corridor for commercial districts.
Thank you, Mr. Porez. Ms. Grant?
So let me just be clear, is our downtown district, what I'm looking at and what I'm assuming and I'm thinking with our new updated general plan, is that our Palm and Pearson area? Or is that another area? Can you hear me? Palm and Pearson?
You said Palm and Pearson, I believe you said Palm and Pearson is a downtown area?
She said, the question that she's asking is if this area, Palm and Pearson is included in that area, is Palm and Pearson included in the, in the area that we're talking about right now?
Yes, that would be included as part of the downtown.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Ms. Grant?
Yes, it did.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of staff from the Planning Commission? Commissioner Wagstaff?
Just for clarity, the commercial district is from Mesquite to Cactus down Pearson, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, that was all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wagstaff. Vice Chair Nindell? Fantastic. Is there any other questions of staff, Ms. Grant, before we move on to the public hearing?
No, I'll wait for discussion, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, with no further questions of staff, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, take public testimony from those in favor, opposed, or in a neutral position on this item. Do we have anyone in the queue?
No, we do not.
Fantastic. With no one in the queue to discuss this item, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to Planning Commission discussion. We'll go ahead and start off with Commissioner Grant.
Okay, so where I left off, where this concerns me, is I think this is all well and intended, but it's not, I think it's premature. We're going to go back to that. My concern is the law enforcement. My concern are, we don't have certain ordinances that basically, they seem antiquated or contradictory to what we're intending to do half the time. So I went back and I looked at a particular ordinance, basically, under cannabis facilities that basically precludes certain things from happening within our city as far as, I want to say, hiring practices or actually permits. And then we want to go ahead and allow for a conditional use permit for anybody in a downtown facility, in a downtown facility within this commercial district. It's a concern for me. It's really a valid concern for me, seeing that we don't have certain measures in place. I think it's, I think it's a great idea, I think it's well-intended, but I don't think, I believe it's premature. And I have other things to just go ahead and ask with the commission for us to discuss this, so I could see what your thoughts are on this particular item, because it is a concern. I can pull out some ordinances and some other things that go with the California state law that concern me.
Thank you, Commissioner Grant. Commissioner Wagstaff?
No questions.
Very good. Vice Chair Nindell? Okay, fantastic. You know, I'm looking at this, I'm looking at this project through the same kind of eyes that we looked at another project this evening that had cannabis leaves all over the side of the building. And, you know, we're trying to, some comments were made that we're trying to break a stigma. And I was won over by those comments, I agree. We're trying, we're embracing cannabis in this area and we're embracing not just the word cannabis, we're embracing the word marijuana in this community as well, and there are stigmas. We sat here and we made a decision on another item tonight to combat those stigmas. And I would be remiss to sit here and say that I wouldn't agree with moving this forward to the, to the City Council based on Commissioner Grant's concerns, based on the simple fact that we just approved another item and one of the items that was discussed was the stigma. And it sounds like the stigma is potentially going to be a holdup on this particular item. That's just my thoughts on it. I'd like to get away from, since we've already gotten away from the stigma once tonight, I'd like to get away from the stigma again. But those are just my thoughts. Is there any other commissioners that would like to comment? Okay, no further comments. At this time, I would like to make a motion to recommend to the City Council to adopt an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Desert Hot Springs, California, amending chapter 17 dot 180 dot 048 marijuana entertainment facilities and table 17 dot 12 dot 01 to allow for cannabis entertainment facilities in the commercial downtown zoned districts. May I have a second?
I will second.
Have a second from Commissioner Wagstaff. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Grant?
Abstaining.
I'm sorry, was that an abstain?
I'm going to give a no.
No, okay. Commissioner Mayor Hoffman, absent. Commissioner Wagstaff?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Aye.
Chairman Duffel?
Aye.
Motion passes with Commissioner Grant opposed.
Fantastic. At this time, we will go ahead and reopen the public comments. An opportunity is going to be given to those members of the public who have not addressed the Planning Commission on an item which is not on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Do we have anyone in queue for public comments this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay, fantastic. We'll go ahead and close the public comments and move on to chair and planning commission reports. Commissioner Grant, do you have any commissioner reports?
Yes, just recently, I believe it was April the 26th, I believe, after our special meeting, they lobbied at the State of California to support AB 2691. I'm not sure that everybody knows what that is about, but that has to do with support direct marketing and sales to support small batch cannabis. That will allow for the cultivators presently at this time that are having difficulty within the market to be able to go to farmers' markets and have their products shown as a vendor. So I think that's an important discussion for us, well, important for me to kind of share with you guys so you'll understand what's happening within the community. Outside of that, my commission report is, the reason for this last agenda item and why I'm saying no is because we don't, we're making a premature move. This city has a duty to basically look at social equity. That is one thing that we have not been doing. We have allowed cultivators, dispensaries, everybody, even distribution down to delivery. And there is no program within this city that allows for any person that has been harmed by the negative impacts to the war on drugs to even look at and discuss social equity. I have brought it up to our council, our mayor, our city manager. I've had these discussions, I'm happy to see entertainment, but at some point, instead of just looking at revenue coming in, we have a due diligence to look at social equity within the cannabis community as well. We also need to look at our ordinances that do not allow for people that have past convictions before 60, 64, and 215, to address those issues within the city so they can have gain for employment. There are too many people here that do not have jobs and these are the things that we're not discussing. So that's it for public comment for me, well, for commissioner comment for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grant. Commissioner Wagstaff?
No comment.
Vice Chair Nindell? Fantastic. At this time, I'd like to take a moment. Commissioner Mayor Hoffman is not here this evening. I was anticipating him being here, but he is not. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to let everyone know that Commissioner Mayor Hoffman, effective tomorrow, has resigned from the Planning Commission due to some personal reasons. However, I would like to extend my gratitude as the chairman of this commission as well as my gratitude from the City of Desert Hot Springs to Commissioner Mayor Hoffman for his impeccable service to the city for so many years. He will definitely be missed on this commission. Secondly, I would like to say, in regards to some of the comments made tonight during commissioner member reports, we have to remember that we serve on a planning commission, we don't sit on the city council. So what we do on this commission, we are restricted by this position. We're not allowed to go beyond the realms of the planning commission. We have to stay within our job description. And a lot of the points that were made tonight in regards to some of the things that the city should be looking at are things that need to be taken up on a city council level. And I truly hope that anyone in the community, commissioners included, that have as much passion for these items as Commissioner Grant seems to, to certainly seek out a council run to try and make some changes. But we need to keep the Planning Commission on track with Planning Commission items. That is the end of my report. At this time, we'll go ahead and take the Community and Development Director report.
Yes, I have a small PowerPoint here to tell you guys a little bit about what's going on. So this month is Building Safety Month. It's, for those who are not aware of what Building Safety Month is, so for more than four decades, the Code Council, the International Code Council and its members, they've developed this month to commemorate everyone who is in and part of the building and safety world, which can include planning, building, you name it, construction workers and developers. So some of the impacts that have been created over the years and specifically last year, there's been over 232 proclamations, a lot of different information that's gone out there for the public to know, different safety parameters that you can take to make your house a safer place. And just to let you guys know, we actually had a proclamation at the last city council meeting, so it was really neat. We're actually one of the only cities in the Coachella Valley who did that, which is really important to be part of the ICC and support them. So here's a little bit about what we have going on. May 3rd, we have, we had the city council proclamation. Today, we're presenting a little bit of information about what we have going on. May 18th, we have a really cool ADU community workshop that we're excited to put on for the community. On May 19th, we're doing a Public Works Week and Building Safety Month Employee Expo. It's a pilot for possibly next year doing one that's open to the public. We're just trying it out for this year and see how it goes. So at your desk, we have, I left a couple of ads, flyers for the ADU workshop that we're going to be doing. It's going to be more of an informational workshop to let the community know the different plans that we've developed for them. As you guys have heard, and probably already know, we did get approved, to get some pre-approved ADU designs done, which include all the construction documents. It's something that we're really proud of. I just recently attended a housing meeting and brought this up and all of the cities that were there were kind of blown away and they were really excited and thought, what a unique idea. So I think it's really cool that we're doing that impression and leaving that impression on our community. So I think it's really cool that we're doing that impression and leaving that impression on our community. We have placed these flyers all over the community. Here's some evidence to show that. We actually had Dan go out and Patricia go out to different locations that we felt were very good spots to put these on. And we also have been handing them out to people. We've been refilling our flyers at the front counter constantly. So a lot of community members, developers, designers are really interested in this. Here's an example of one of the designs. It's something that, I'm really proud to see this, to be honest. It's something that the community deserves. So these are pre-designed ADUs, they're going to be free to the community. They can basically, over the counter, you'll be able to pick what ADU you'd like to have at your house. And with construction costs and designing costs increasing, I think it's just a phenomenal way to help the residents. Like I said, we really found an amazing architect that's been working with us to find different types of architecture that are really cohesive, and they work really well and are complementary of the city. And as you drive around, you notice in any community, you have different types of architecture styles. So it was important for us to make sure that they gave us different ones that could apply to different various types of communities. So about the employee expo, it's a very unique little thing that we're doing here to help the employees, the internal employees, know how important and what role Public Works and Building and Safety have in our community. Just internal outreach within our own organization is very important to keep everybody on top of what different departments do. Here's a fun fact. So one of the earliest known building codes included the Code of Hammurabi, which dates circa 1772. And this is where kind of the building codes originated. And it was a little, a little far out there when you read what was stated. But in the 1780s, they stated that if a builder built a house for someone and it wasn't constructed properly, and the house which he built fails and kills the owner, then the builder shall be put to death. We have since evolved from that, and we no longer obviously practice that. We have now building codes that are very extensive. We have over 16 different and more continuing to come, different building codes, energy codes, plumbing, mechanical, you name it. It's really evolved, and it continues to evolve as the industry grows. And what I, what I left on your, on your, on your chairs there is, we have a, for the kids that come, we actually have a workbook and a coloring book for them that go over different safety parameters they can take to make their house safer. It also includes a junior building safety inspector, a little placard here. And they will also get a little mini hard hat and a mini vest. So it's really cool to kind of be able to do these little things that I think go a long way. I know growing up, it helped me stay engaged, things like this were really unique. So I'm really happy to see Desert Hot Springs being very innovative and progressive and doing these same things for our community. So with that, that concludes my report, my update for everybody. And I really hope to see every, all of you there at the ADU workshop come in and see what we have going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. I appreciate that. And again, that is an ADU workshop on May 18th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. where you can get free English and Spanish building classes for a pre-approved accessory dwelling units here at City Hall. Thank you very much. I appreciate all of the hard work that you guys are doing here in City Hall to make this a very welcoming place for our community, not just the adults, but the children as well. It is 7:43 p.m., and this meeting is adjourned.